December 28, 2022, City Council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
President.
Mr. Chilson?
Present.
Ms. Parker?
President.
Ms. Hutchings?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Carey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there any changes to the motion or agenda, or agenda or consent agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to add lay down resolution 2022-062, commending Breck Hewitt for her dedicated years of service as deputy clerk and interim city clerk for the city of Soldatna to the agenda as Agenda Item 7B5.
Thank you. Are there any objections to adding Resolution 2022-062 to the agenda? Seeing none, will a clerk please read the consent agenda?
December 14, 2022, council meeting minutes. Ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2022-038, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $6,701 in the general fund for forfeited property brought to you by the city manager in hearings on January 11. Resolution 2022-058, authorizing a contract with H Construction LLC in the amount of $132,100 for the mitigation and reduction of hazardous fuels on the city lands project brought to you by the city manager. Resolution 2022-059, authorizing signatures for the city of Soldatna accounts with First National Bank Alaska and other various investments companies with whom the city does business, brought to you by the city manager. Resolution 2022-060, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $10 million to finance part of the costs of the construction of a field house at Soldatna Regional Sports Complex, fixing certain details of such bonds, authorizing their sale and providing for related matters, brought to you by the city manager. Action Memo 2022-030, confirming the city council ex officio appointment to the city of Soldatna Parks and Recreation Board sponsored by the mayor, Jordan Chilson, council ex officio member. That is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak on any of the items just read by the clerk? Okay, no one here in the audience and I see no, no one on Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak on the, speak to, to speak to the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Moving to the next item on the agenda is number four, public comments and presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, and I see no Zoom participants. So we will move on to the next agenda item. Assembly and legislative report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here, well, I see no one from the Assembly or Legislature here and I see no one on Zoom, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. Public hearings. Testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. Ordinance 2022-036, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $32,000 in the general fund for changes to the authorized personnel staffing table for fiscal year 2023 introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the enactment of ordinance 2022-036, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $32,000.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. At the council's December 14 meeting, a resolution was adopted which reclassified one of our part-time library employee positions to be a full-time position. And this ordinance would appropriate the funds necessary for that change through the remainder of the current fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2022-036? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom and I see no one on Zoom. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Ordinance 2022-036 passes on a 5-0 vote. Next item is ordinance 2022-037, accepting grant funds from the Alaska State Council and the Arts, Community Arts Partnership Grant and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $20,000 in the Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund for the development of an arts and cultural master plan introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move to enact ordinance 2022-037.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Are there, a report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. We had discussed the possibility of using some of the city's ARPA funds at the ARPA work session held many months ago. And the administration had met with council member Chilson and Ruffridge at the time to discuss potential next steps. And one of the concepts was to work with the community in a community engagement effort and development of a plan that would look at existing cultural resources and organizations, existing opportunities and potential next steps. And we had applied for two separate grants. One was through the State of Alaska's Council on the Arts and that's the grant we recently were notified that the city's been awarded. The second was a national grant that we've applied for, but we wouldn't find out until sometime in the middle of next year. It's got a much longer timeframe. So we do recommend that the city move forward in accepting this grant. And the original grant of $20,000, we had proposed in our grant application a matching amount of 20,000 and we're recommending that that be from the ARPA funds which are already appropriated. So approval of this ordinance would authorize us to use those funds in that way. If we receive approval tonight, we will put out a competitive RFP for a consultant to lead that initiative, which would, as I mentioned, involve quite a bit of public engagement and working with community partners and members to decide what, what the vision is for arts and culture in the community moving forward. I think this grant has a fairly quick timeline, so I anticipate that work would start immediately and I believe has to be completed by the end of June. So it'd be about a six-month effort if we initiated it right away. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2022-037? Seeing none, looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just go ahead and expand a little bit on the report provided by city manager Queen. As she had previously mentioned, this whole thing kind of originated following an ARPA work session we had and there was discussion on the, on interest in supporting arts and culture in the community. And really at that point in time, it came down to the fact that we didn't have a good mechanism to fairly distribute grant funding into the community and really kind of exploring some structure for distributing city funds equitably in the city to support arts and culture. And subsequent meetings with that, that I had with the city administration and councilman Ruffridge on this, we really looked at the possibility of establishing some form of community arts commission or arts council or, or so forth that could really kind of serve as a community partner with the city and not only help distribute those funds, potentially help guide us in development of grant programs and potential oversight of those moving forward. But before we can even get to that point, I am fully supportive with administration and establishing some form of specific planning document for arts and cultures so that as we establish these programs, we're doing so in the way that is the most efficient and best interest of the city. As mentioned in the report in our packet tonight, arts and culture have been identified as priorities for our city in the envisioned Soldatna 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And some of those priorities that have been identified in that planning document, if they've been determined to be enough of a priority, we have done specific planning documents for things like trails and parks and rec. This is just another one of those things where as a council, we've previously voiced that we have interest in supporting arts and culture in our community. And I think this is a great first step to get that planning document going, to advance those in our city. Additionally, I would say that I look at this as an investment in our city to improve the quality of life for our community while additionally strengthening our local economy. I think we're all very well aware of how much of an impact we have seen with the park and all the activities going down there with the music, just the culture that that brings into our community and the dollars that flow with that. I mean, if you want to, you know, focus on the impact of the city financially, that, that park and the events in it carry a huge impact. And I think something like this that will further advance arts and culture in our city and draw more people into our downtown hub and make Soldatna a vibrant community that people want to come be in and be part of and spend money in. I think this is a great all-around thing for our city and I'm very excited to support this. So I would ask for your support likewise tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-037 passes on a 5-0 vote. Moving on to the next agenda item is number seven, new business. And the first one will be Resolution 2022-061, authorizing a sole source professional service agreement with Burkhart Croft Architects in the amount of $220,000 for the final design and bid phase support on the Soldatna Field House project introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
I'll motion to adopt Resolution 2022-061.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'd like to ask Public Works Director Cornelis to provide our report.
Thank you. This resolution would authorize a professional services contract with Burkhart Croft Architects for final design and bid phase efforts associated with the Field House project. Burkhart Croft Architects was competitively awarded the original design and completed the design to the state it is in now. This work would entail final design efforts, really going from a 95% to 100% bid set document. It would also include some additional design work for the connecting piece that would connect the Field House with the existing sports complex, in addition to some engineering and geotechnical work associated with shifting the building over to accommodate parking and a future expansion of the conference rooms. Additionally, they would be assisting the city with furniture and fixture and equipment selection, such as flooring for the various type of events that we want to have in that building. And then finally, assistance in the bid phase as we bid the construction efforts hopefully this spring. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 2022-061? Seeing none, looking at Zoom, we have no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-061 passes on a 5-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2022-062, commending Breck Hewitt for her dedicated years of service as deputy clerk and interim city clerk for the city of Soldatna, introduced by the mayor, Vice Mayor Parker, council member Carey, council member Chilson, council member Hutchings and council member Nelson. And this is a resolution commending Breck Hewitt for her dedicated years of service as deputy clerk and interim city clerk for the city of Soldatna, whereas Breck Hewitt began her employment with the city of Soldatna in February 2018 as deputy city clerk. And whereas in December 2021, Breck was elevated to the position of interim city clerk. And whereas the Soldatna City Council and mayor wished to express their gratitude and appreciation to her for those dedicated years of public service to the city of Soldatna and the community. And whereas Breck was awarded her certified municipal clerk certification by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Incorporated as a demonstration of her significant contribution to her local government, her community and the state of Alaska. And whereas Breck demonstrated her commitment to the field of municipal clerks by providing invaluable support to the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks by serving as Chair of the, Chair of the Vendor Sponsor Committee and serving as a member of the fundraising publications, conference planning, legislative and records management committee. And whereas her tireless efforts in support of the city council and community of Soldatna have directly and positively affected and enabled every function of the government of the city of Soldatna made manifest in the following ways. Oversight of municipal elections, providing expert parliamentarian advice, direction and guidance to the city council and numerous boards and commissions, giving public notice on a wide variety of manners required by law or in the best interest of the public, working within requirements of local, state and federal statutes to ensure the city of Soldatna compliance, aiding any number of the community regarding public inquiries with an eye to our transparency of government. And whereas Breck set her personal plans aside for the entire year of 2022 to serve as interim city clerk until a qualified replacement was hired. And whereas Breck Hewitt deserves the appreciation of the residents of Soldatna, Alaska, and as with gratitude, and as the gratitude of the Soldatna City Council for the tenacity, integrity and reliability she exhibited on a daily basis. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Soldatna, Alaska, that the Soldatna City Council commends Breck Hewitt for her years of dedicated public service as deputy and interim city clerk for the city of Soldatna. That the Soldatna City Council hereby extends their sincere thanks and appreciation to Breck Hewitt for her commitment to the city and community and wishes her good health, success and prosperity in the future. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Let me see here, where are we at? May I have a motion to adopt?
I would so move to adopt Resolution 2022-062.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. There's no report from the administration. I guess that'll be mine right now. As stated in that resolution, Breck has done an outstanding, excellent, fantastic job as the interim city clerk. She took on that position and like I said, and says in the resolution, she had made other plans but was concerned about the city and dedicated to the city of Soldatna and continued on and filled in that position for this past year. So that's the report from the administration. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, looking at the Zoom, there is no one there. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilson?
I'd just like to say, Breck, I truly appreciate you stepping up to the plate to help our city over this last year. You've done an incredible job here helping our council and just truly can't thank you enough for that. And it's, I, I know it's been tough and your work here has meant an incredible amount. It's always been great that I can always rely on reaching out to you to get any questions answered and always be there with kindness and clarity and a lot of know-how that is truly appreciated. And really thank you for everything.
Mr. Carey? For each of us here, I think we're quite aware of the challenges of public service. This time period particularly and particularly in the office and the responsibilities that we're speaking about. A sign of real courage of an individual is when they are willing to set aside their own personal life to do good and in good faith to serve others. That's what you've done for us. I greatly admire the courage that I see that you have stepped up, that you have faced. I have to assume, and you have vast knowledge and experience, but I still have to assume there are many things that you didn't know what you were getting into. But you were willing to again, to have that good faith to walk in on our behalf and to serve the people of this town. Thank you sincerely. Any other council comments? Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I would just like to thank Breck because every time I needed an answer to a question, she got it for me. So thank you so very much for stepping up and enjoy the next phase of your life.
Vice Mayor Parker? You're muted. On mute.
Thank, thank you. See, I lowered my hand so that it was lowered and then I forgot to unmute. Anyway, Breck, thank you so very much for putting your future plans on pause. I know even before our previous city clerk had left, you had wanted to retire and to move on and you have other plans. And when Shelley took a different job, you put your plans on pause and it is very, very much appreciated and recognized all of the, what you have done by putting things on pause so that the city of Soldatna continue to function. And thank you so very much. You've done an outstanding job. And if you ever need a recommendation, please let me know.
Mr. Nelson?
You know, as the new person, newish person sitting up here, there's a lot to keep track of and keeping things on the straight and narrow and all of that. So certainly appreciate your help in, in my first year here and thank you very much.
And one last comment for me. Breck has done an outstanding job. Fortunately, she didn't put a sharpened end to that ruler that she kept poking me in the ribs and saying, you can't do that. You forgot this. And I appreciate that and you've done a fantastic job. Having no one else wishing to speak, we're back before the council. Call for the vote.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
And Resolution 2022-062 passes by unanimous consent, 5 to 0. And before we leave this, Breck, I have a little gift for you for everything that you've done. And as you can probably tell, I don't usually have wrapping paper around. So I had to use whatever I could find. And so enjoy. And once you see what it is, I'll tell you what you can do with it.
If Breck's talking, I can't hear her.
I said stationary is my favorite.
You can write down every day the reasons why you shouldn't have left and sort of stayed. You even have a brand new pen there with your name on it to do that.
Set up an Instagram account just for that.
All right. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item eight, mayor and council reports. Mayor's report. I wish everyone a happy and prosperous New Year and a safe New Year's Eve. And like I said, just a great coming year upcoming. Something else I was thinking of here today earlier. And I know we did the planning commission, what was it, 2030? And I was thinking that maybe before we revise that, maybe we, as part of the revision process, kind of look into maybe doing like a survey of the community in three different items. One to the residents of the city and seeing what they see as the, the need and the direction for the city to go in the future. What items that they see as valuable for our community to develop. Then the second phase of that would be to talk to the same survey, asking the kids, the students, the high school kids and grade school kids, what they see as the future for the city of Soldatna and what they see as things that we need to do to help them and help our community. Sometimes what we as adults see as a priority is not necessarily what the kids in school see as a priority. And they're our future. They're the ones that are going to be sitting in these positions down the road. And we want them to stay here. We want them to be involved. So I think they are an area that we need to, to ask the question. And then the third area would be local businesses. When our local business sees and feels that we need to go and do in direction we'd like, they'd like to see us go and what would benefit our entire community. So hopefully that's something we can look at here in the near future. And I mean very near future. And maybe that would be something that we could use some of the ARPA funds on and get started on. It's a new, going into a new year, a lot of things have changed over the last half a dozen years. Actually, it's longer than that. It's probably about 15 years since we did that last thing to planning. So just some thoughts. I'd kind of like the administration to kind of come back maybe with some thoughts on it. So that concludes my report. Council reports on boards, we, and commissions, we have none tonight. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Congratulations to Breck. We're going to have a staff party tomorrow to celebrate her and wish her well. And I also agree with everything that you stated in the resolution adopted by the council tonight. She stepped up. She did a commendable job and really happy to work by your side, Breck, this past year. Happy holidays to everybody. And this is a good time of year where a lot of us are in the office just catching up and tackling the projects that maybe we haven't been able to devote as much time to. So it's a busy time for us, but it's a good time of year to, to move forward. I just want to give one quick update. Thank you for the bond legislation that passed tonight. You'll see that authorized in that resolution was up to $10 million, which is our plan to seek an initial tranche of $10 million and then come back at some point in the future, whether it's 12 to 18 months from now with the remaining, remaining piece as an additional tranche of funds. And that has a few different benefits. The first is that it allows us not to take on more debt than we need earlier than we need it and be paying the interest on that funding that would just be sitting in our bank account. But because of the construction realities, we really won't need that full amount right away. It also allows us to continue working and advocating at the state and federal level for outside funding for the project and hopefully reduce that overall amount of debt that we'll have to incur. And then third, it gives us more certainty into what that amount will be. So we will have bid the project, we will have exhausted all of our efforts to seek outside funding. And then we will have the ability to go back for that second tranche with much more precision in terms of the amount of dollars that are needed. So thank you for that authorization and we're excited to move forward with that project. I think that concludes my report. Happy New Years, everybody, and see you in January.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom and see no hands raised there. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Ms. Hutchings, you've been trying all night to get my attention, so.
Well, I would just like to say Happy New Year and I'm glad that I'm done flying for the year.
Mr. Nelson?
And Happy New Years, Wild, everybody. And Happy New Years, Wild, everybody.
Mr. Chilson?
I hope everyone had a wonderful Christmas this year and Happy New Years as well, and I'll see you all next year.
And Mr. Carey?
Thank you. You know, we've all seen some challenges with the weather. We've had the weather the last couple of weeks that we had pretty consistently in the 60s and 70s here, which challenged the people that lived here. As a coach and as a human person, I know the challenge refines you and makes you better. It improves your skills. I greatly appreciate the work the city workers have been doing. I know it's been a huge challenge, and I'm sure it's often, they're not appreciated. But again, just trying to keep the roads, the sidewalks, the buildings open, doing the work that the city has to do, they've done an excellent job, and I appreciate it. And again, I find that a challenge is good and helpful and healthy, and I hope everyone has a wonderful New Year. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I want to say thank you, Senator Murkowski, for the almost $2 million that you included for City of Soldatna wastewater projects that were included in the appropriations bill that is now sitting on the president's desk. And Happy New Year to everybody, and we'll see you all in 2023.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, executive session, there is no reason for one. Item 13, pending legislation, ordinance 2022-035, Amending Soldatna Municipal Code Title 17 to Establish Standards for the Use of Accessory Dwelling Units of Short-Term Rentals, introduced by council member Chilson. Public hearing on that will be January 11, 2022. Meeting announcements. January 4, 2023, Planning and Zoning Commission, 5:30 p.m. January 5, 2023, Parks and Recreation Board Work Session, 5:30 p.m. And January 11, 2023, City Council Meeting at 6 p.m. Before we leave and adjourn this meeting, we have this resolution that we'll need everyone to sign. So we will now, having no regular business, anything else on the agenda before us, the meeting is adjourned.
See you next year.